Welcome to the Wotten Town Council meeting. Item one, to receive and accept apologies for absence.
We've got Tina Caddell, Tobia Madison and Keith Prince.
Are you all happy to accept those apologies or would you like to do them individually? Yeah. Item two, to note declaration of members' personal prejudicial and discloseable pecuniary interests in respect of items on the agenda. Yes, Stan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, 7.3II, I'm now a member of the Chamber of Commerce, so I declare that as an interest.
Yes, Pat? And Beryl? Item eight, so it's Beryl, Keith, Stan and myself because we've attended an awful lot of the Watten Twinning Association items, so I think we would be sort of like a biased opinion because we've socialised with them. Certainly very many of you left. Okay. Item three, minutes, item 3.1, to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on the 14th of March 2023 are a true and accurate record. Has anybody got any queries? Are those in favour of accepting? Yeah, they are. Beryl, Don and Keith. Yep. 3.2, to receive an update on items from the previous meeting, if not agenda items, for this meeting. Any updates or anything at all, Michelle?
No, there is.
Item four, to receive reports, 4.1, Chairman's Report. On Thursday the 16th, I went to the opening of the Hub. Friday the 17th, attended the Charles Beryl and Beryl Centre in Thetford for the civic reception of the Chair of Breckland Council. And on Sunday the 26th, attended the AGM of the Twinning Association, which was held at the Carbrook Hub. Missed it, Pat, it was last week. Item 4.2, Vice Chairman's Report.
Thank you, Chair. On the 16th, I attended the official opening of the Food Hub and with you later on, attended the Finance Committee meeting. But that's my report.
Right, thank you. District Councilor's Report. Got anything at all for us, Keith?
Just to say that, like you, I attended the Breckland Chairman's Reception and there is an election now for the new Breckland Council to be held on the 4th of May. No, I said there is an election. Anybody can put up if they wish and nominations need to be in by the 4th of April.
Item 4.4, County Councilor's Report. That come in? I said I didn't see one on there.
We had a written report from Tina for a district council which I circulated, but nothing from Claire.
Item 4.5, Clerk, Deputy Clerk's Report.
Just got a couple of verbal things to update on. In the report, it says about maybe a member of the council attending Carnival Committee meetings. I don't know whether we want to wait to decide that or whether... No, we haven't got any dates, no, not moving forward, but they've just asked whether anyone would be interested in attending them going forward.
Yes, Keith? Pat, you need to turn yourself.
Yes, I think because we are so involved in other issues in the town, I think somebody, a representative from the council would be very useful on the Carnival Committee. So we can help coordinate things and get involved. Because I know the Carnival Committee are struggling and I think any help that they can get, particularly from us as a council, will be very welcome.
Yes, Stan?
Yeah, I concur what Keith says, but also as we're leaving this until we have a new council, could I suggest that we do get back to them and tell them that we are supportive of this in principle, but we can't give them a name until post-election.
I was going to just propose that that go on the list of outside bodies for the first meeting of the new council.
We let them know that we are interested in doing that.
That's what Stan's just said.
All right, yeah, that's what I mean. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any more items, Michelle?
Yeah, just a couple more. Don brought up about a meeting with Deirham Town Council about the country park. I don't know, do you want to update on that, Don? Do you mind?
Deirham Town Council have put forward all their plans, it was in the Eastern Daily Press, Press rather, for their country park. And we did talk a long time ago about tapping into some of their expertise that they've learnt over the past year or two years, so... And we still haven't had the meeting, so I think we just need to go ahead, you know, so that we're ready when the land does get handed over eventually.
Perhaps we can put that again, something to be pulled forward for the new council, not the first meeting, because I think the first meeting's going to be pretty busy now, but perhaps the second meeting after... As the rate it's going, I don't think we're going to get the land before then, to be honest. Or maybe by Christmas, but... I didn't say which Christmas, did I? Is there anything else, Michelle?
Sorry, yeah, just an update, the pigeon works are going to start on the April 17th, next door. And the other thing is, I've had an email from the Parish Rangers, so if you notice any defects around the town, potholes, flooding water, any poor visible signs, anything, just if you can get them in to me by the 10th of April, I can then report them and hopefully they could be added to their list of jobs to do. I'm going to get loads of... I'm going to be unindated.
You need that by the 4th of April? Yes, Keith?
Talking about potholes, there is another issue I've seen around the town, not only round here, but inspection covers in the roads are dropping. There's one outside, where are we? Down Thetford Road, opposite... What's the Charles Avenue, which must be that deep. I've been driving down that way quite a lot recently and you have to literally avoid it, so you have to go across the road a little bit to actually drive around it rather than over it. And I've noticed it all over the place. A lot of them are dropping.
Could I suggest that you contact our councillor, I think her name's Claire Bowles, and get her to advise highways to pass them out.
Actually, I have reported it to an even better source who has, is on first-name terms with people from highways, angry water. And yeah, it's not just here, it's everywhere I've been lately, you see them dropping. And that can cause a big accident because eventually that inspection cover will drop completely. And if that happens and a car goes over it, it can be big problems.
Thank you, Keith. Did you have your hand up, Stan?
Yeah, I did. We've managed to move on quite seamlessly from the Clerk's Report to the Works in Progress, I think, haven't we? Or are we still on the Clerk's Report?
Still on the Clerk's. This was to do with the Rangers.
Oh, right, okay. Now, hold me peace till the end of the Clerk's Report, but something on the Clerk's Report.
Have the streetlights been painted? Okay.
Weren't they supposed to be starting? They were meant to start last Monday and they said obviously the weather was not good. I haven't heard anything since, so...
Guess it'd be after Easter. Was there anything else on your list? Okay. Item five.
I did say, well, did you add something on there? Since the Clerk sent out this, her report, she and I have had a conversation, if I can draw your attention to where, talking about the vandalism at the toilets and the Clerk's put, "The police have been informed and we are looking at the possibility of putting a security camera to the outside of the toilets, etc." I've had a conversation with her and I'm not going to bore you with the legislation, that will not happen. We will not have CCTV inside or looking at the entrance of the toilet. If you want gory details, we have trouble sleeping, talk to me later.
Yes, Peter?
Well, I know the work has started and had a problem the other day because the skip hadn't been delivered, so they had to put everything back inside again, I think. I'm not sure what kind of vandalism we've had and I can only presume, which is quite bizarre, it's happened during the day because the toilet's supposed to be locked by six, four o'clock. So it's had to have happened during daylight hours, which seems a bit weird to me. The only thing I can think of, I don't, I agree, you can't put cameras up anywhere, is if there's a recurrence, what's the new toilets? The only other thing we can consider, I'm not suggesting we talk about it now, but you put a door on and you have to pay to get in through the door. So you can't even get into the toilets unless you've used a card or put money in. Normally, most places now use a tap-on card. It's not something I would want to have to happen, but if we've spent how much, sixty-odd thousand pounds on the toilets in places, we wouldn't want to see them trashed immediately. Could be a one-off. We seem to have gone a long time without any problems there.
Yes, Catherine? When the new toilets are up and running, can we ask that in the short term, our town operative just checks at four o'clock to make sure that the toilets are being locked?
Yes, Claire?
The actual vandalism, what is the vandalism? Are they smashing up the porcelain or pulling pipes or...?
I believe Sue said that the urinal was smashed and one of the pipes was broken, wasn't it?
Well, the only reason I ask is because, not that I'm familiar with it, but prison toilets are bolt-to-the-wall and stainless steel. It's a one-off, you can't break it, you can't smash it up. So instead of spending money on fancy porcelain, why don't we go the other way where it's virtually impossible to vandalise it?
I think they are going to be stainless steel, aren't they?
Well, they won't be, sorry, through you, Chair. Won't be urinals in there, I think they're all going to be WC's now, right the way through. So, but that doesn't stop anybody vandalising it, I quite agree with you. It's bizarre because we really, as far as I'm aware, since I've been on the council, we haven't had a problem there and that's eight years. So why suddenly now? I don't know. Wasn't somebody celebrating leaving the council or something, was he?
Can I go back to Michelle?
I've got to just mention one thing. Sue Dent has asked whether we would like a stall at the King's Coronation Event on the 6th of May. I think the plan is, is to have an event at the Sports Centre, a Platinum Picnic like last year, lots of free activities for children, petting farm, bouncy castle face painting and obviously the big screen that we're getting given from Breckland to live stream the coronation. So do we want a stall of some sort with an activity?
Yes, Pat? I think should, because where do we hold an event if there's not... Sue asked me if I'd do the Child Protection Officer, which is not a problem, but you need to be somewhere, don't you, if this... Well, I will be there because of, I'll be Child Protection Officer, but you know, I don't want to stand there by myself all day. Yes, Stan?
Subject to your commitments as Chair, I'm more than happy to put in some time there. I feel that an event as prestigious as a coronation, we have no choice, we should be there and represent the council in one form or another. There should be 15 councillors on the council, so even if that equated to an hour each, that would count for seven and a half. Seven and a half hours if we go to his up, but I feel we should have a representation and I'm happy to put some time in, subject to what we have to do with you as Chair.
Yes, Pat? Bearing in mind the new council, I have said to Sue that I'm happy to do it regardless because you have to know that it's going to happen, don't you?
Yeah, I think we obviously have to have a presence there. You know, we are the representatives of, at the end of the day, the Crown's authority at a local level. And yeah, we need to be there, we did it last time and for the Jubilee and it was very successful and I'll be, I will be there all day, so I'll be around.
Thank you, Keith. Yes, Beryl?
I'm just very, very, very disappointed in the way this has been handled towards the council. We've had no notification from Sue as such as what is going on. I've been asked and I've had to tell people. Sports Centre on the Saturday, the coronation day, nothing for the big lunch on the Sunday when the picnic should have been. And I'm just very, very disappointed with the handling of this. I just think we could have done so, so much more. And it's just very, very late minute dot com now, what we're doing. But I will be there if needed.
Thank you, Beryl. And you'll be there. So I think we will have a stall of some sorts, perhaps get together. It's unfortunate because the funding for it was for charities, which is why the Sports Centre stepped forward, they've got the grounds to do it and they could also apply for the grant. But yes, it would be nice if there'd been an earlier item. Yes, Peter?
We agreed to put some money into it originally, if you remember, because we said we thought it was more appropriate to have it at the Sports Centre, but what, I don't know, as you've said, from what you've just reported back, it sounds as though it's going to be very similar to what we did for the Jubilee. But we organised that ourselves. Now, if we're party to it, I don't know who's organising, that's part of the problem, I think. So if we could ask to have, we're not going to have another meeting now to the end of April. Could we ask to have a report from Sue circulated to us by email or tortoise or whatever, so we can all know what is going on? I mean, we're presuming she's organising it, but it could well be, she's told the Sports Centre, this is what we did, you get on there and they might be doing it, so we don't know. So I think it would be helpful if we got some kind of report back on what is going on, as you rightly say, Beryl, it's here in the town and we ought to know what's happening.
Yes, Beryl. Would it be possible to have a meeting very, very soon with her? I mean, if we're having a stall, what are we going to do on the stall? Are we going to make crowns? Are we going to, what are we going to do?
Ask her if she could certainly report what she knows is happening and organise a meeting for those who are interested as to what is going to take place with the stall, so we can find out what we're supposed to be doing when we're there. Okay.
Yes, Pat?
I wondered whether we could perhaps have a meeting on the 11th of April since the town meeting isn't going away, sorry, isn't going ahead at the moment, so it wouldn't be quite too close to that or anything. The 11th is the day that we cancelled that meeting because it was too close to... Yeah, so that quite effectively.
I don't know if Sue's, is she away?
Sorry, Pat, are you talking about a full council meeting or an events meeting?
Well, events, but it's a time to have it, it's just a suggestion.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah. The reason I think the last one was cancelled is to do with the Easter bank holiday and getting the agenda out. It wasn't to do with the, but it wasn't a meeting.
Well, it would seem a logical, through you, Chair, logical date to pick and to ask Sue if she could arrange one early on. What time was the town meeting, you said? The annual meeting, have we, no?
Yeah.
Is it still, so we cancelled it, then got room? The one that we should have had, that Pat's talking about, on the 11th of April. Okay, well, can we ask Sue to arrange a meeting early here? Say six? Six thirty?
Whatever.
Six thirty? Here?
Yeah, on the 11th of April.
Give us a report back and we can decide what we're doing at the...
That would be good to know.
Well, we'll tell her she has sent reporting, well, somebody's going to have to be here for it. If she wants us to do something with it, she's got to tell us that.
Here, could it be just like Beryl and one or two other people that sort of meet with Sue and then find out and report back later? It might be easier to arrange, what have you, because that could be during her working days.
Yeah, it could, but it would be nice to have as many people as possible because those people could have an input as well, couldn't they?
Well, we can have an input later once we find out what actually is planned, pardon?
Sorry, can I come in there, Madam Chair? My concerns are that this is going to get pushed down the line like we do so many times that we're not going to be able to give it the effort it deserves. My considerations were that we ask Sue for an update sooner rather than later and that ideas get bounced around before the meeting. We have the meeting to ratify ideas and to finalise rather than go away, do thinking and plan another meeting when everything's too late. We can do a lot before a meeting. By meeting at half-six, we're going to get more councillors there and it is unfortunate if it inconveniences Sue, but this only happens once in a lifetime.
I think if you can work with Sue, I know you sent around the holiday lists, is she away, do you know? I mean, if she's away away, then we can't do it. Sorry? Oh, so she'd be back then? She's back then? So if we can confirm that. Yes, Don?
Just following up on what Stan has said, I wasn't suggesting that we leave it until sort of like, I was hoping that you might better meet her this week and then get some idea and then circulate it round, sort of thing, so actually bring it forward rather than push it into the long grass.
Can I, to take you from that, and it's slightly deviating, I know you're doing the child safety, have you been DBS checked and are you safeguarded? There's a safeguarding policy that you have to do. So I just wanted to make sure that as a council, we were properly covered, yeah? Okay. Sorry, Catherine?
We've had a response from the person at Norfolk Trails about the encroachment onto Church Walk and she said that they are aware of it and that they are looking into it. Could we just respond by saying, you know, we're pleased that they are paying that attention, but she should be aware that there's been more activity recently at the end of, the Dearham End of Church Walk due to some work that's going on in one of the properties?
Yes, Pat?
The meeting that we're proposing on the 11th just happens to be on the same day, I might have, should have probably brought this up at the Charlotte Holiday, but a couple of weeks ago or last week, when I was at the Wayland Partnership Meeting, they have a whole, they had a whole load of uniforms, school uniforms there and they, you know, they wanted rid of them, so I agreed to take them. I went down there last week and collected them all and I've washed them all and I've almost finished ironing them all and I never want to see an iron ever again. But I spoke to Sue and we reviewed to holding a uniform sale on the 11th, during the day though, to any proceeds to go to the Food Hub, so I mean, I don't imagine I'll make fortunes, but the fact that they're clean and ironed and everything makes them look a little bit more attractive, even if we sell everything for a pound each, it's something.
Anything more on the works in progress, Michelle? Item six, public participation, there is no public. Does anybody, and there's nobody watching either, so I can't even get a show on it. Item seven, finance, 7.1, to approve payments for March 2023. Now, that came through later, but hopefully you've all had a chance to see them. Yes, Michelle?
Sorry, Beryl brought up a couple of things. So what I sent you out, a couple of them on there were incorrect slightly, so I shall watch to go through them quickly. You've got Flur, Flur Spectrum, I think it is, was written down as being forty-three pound and nine p, but it's actually forty-three pound and eight p.
Oh, Beryl.
Yeah. There was a BT which was listed as being twenty-five pound twenty-six, but actually it's twenty-five pound fifty-six.
Oh!
I know. I know.
Oh.
Yeah. And CBR was listed as sixty eight pound and seven, but it's actually sixty eight pound and two.
Oh, my word, all these pennies.
So I think it was, what was the other one, the van? Can't remember what the van was, I didn't write that one down, Beryl, what was it? No, I think.
The van was written down at six hundred and twenty five pound fifty, and it was six hundred and eighty two pounds fifty.
Oh.
I've done that, it's fine.
Oh, that's brilliant, I don't want to put the blame on anyone, give these ones.
You were distracted, weren't you?
So apart from those slight faux pas that maybe Michelle didn't do, is everybody happy with the payments, the adjusted payments? All those in favour of approving? Item 7.2 to receive the finance committee meetings from the meeting held on the 16th of the third, 2023. Want to go through those, Catherine? Everyone happy with those? So 7.3, recommendations from the meeting held on March 16th. Part one, to engage consultant Michael Carter at a cost of two and a half thousand pounds to project manage the refurbishment of the Lovell Garden play area to the point where contracts are posted on the contract finder's website. Has anybody got any questions on that? Are you all happy to approve that, those in favour? Okay, that can go ahead. Point two, to agree a donation of a hundred pounds towards the cost of the promotion of the Weyland Chamber of Commerce Job Fair 2023. Now, Pat brought this up at the last committee meeting. And so has anyone got any further questions on that? All those in favour? You can't vote on this because it's termed commerce. That's Hamilton, isn't it, not in the room, it happened. Sorry, Keith.
On that point, I think a big thank, a big thank you to Pat for organising this. It's a, it's a big job and she's doing it all voluntarily. I know we're all volunteers, but she goes over and above and congratulations to Pat.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we can give congratulations when it turns out to be a success. If not.
If not, we don't want to know. Yes, Pat?
I will say that yesterday I rang Weyland Prison, who, I told them I was innocent. Yeah, I rang them to invite them again because they were there last year. They asked me. And when I phoned them, I spoke to a lady and I asked to speak to HR because I couldn't remember the guy's name. And she said, well, who are you? So I explained to who I was and what I wanted, to extend them the courtesy of an invitation. And she said, oh, you'll have to write in to the governor. So I said, I'm not doing that, I don't have the budget for it, for one thing. And they asked me if they could come. And now you're telling me I have to write, it doesn't make any sense, but I don't know. Well, actually, I intended to speak to James because he was asking me about it a couple of weeks ago. And I said, yeah, I've got that in hand because I've obviously, I've got a list of the people that had last time that I can ask if I think it's worth it, which in their case, I think it is. They've been advertising all over Facebook, and yet they won't accept an invitation. What, you mean the lady on the reception, yeah, for beg?
Okay, so all in favour of the hundred pound? Item three, every councillor to be allocated a dot gov email address through which they will receive all electronic communication from the Watton Town Council Office. Hard copies of agendas can be requested, but councillors are asked to bear in mind the increased costs of paper and photocopying. Yes, Catherine?
I mean, we've been having this conversation for a long time now. And the finance committee has been talking about the email addresses alongside whether we should be providing councillors with other technology and also the cost of photocopying and paper, et cetera. And it is quite a complex area and it's, we've really gone round and round the houses on it. And we felt at the end that the best recommendation we could make was that councillors have the dot gov email address because that would give protection to all councillors. But that we didn't necessarily go ahead with other things like laptops and so on. I'm sure there's lots of views on this, but as I say, we have been round and round and round the houses in our discussions on this, and this was the best we could come up with. But we're obviously happy to have people's responses.
Thank you, Catherine. Yes, Beryl?
That won't affect me because I'll be gone, but I really wouldn't be happy to have a dot gov address. It takes me enough time to work out what, let it know.
Yes, Jane?
What date is this effective from?
We thought probably the new council because we, obviously, there's no point in paying for a dot gov email if a councillor's not elected for the new council.
Yeah, well, it won't affect me because I won't be on the council, but I do think that it's very, very difficult for you to put restrictions on what people do and don't do and you're not paying for their internet or for any of their devices. I think that's wrong, but that's for the subsequent council to worry about.
Yes, Keith.
Thank you, I've been obviously using dot gov emails for quite a long while. And all I can say is if we have to use the systems they use, I won't be looking at it half the time because they are rubbish. Take for example the planning committee. We used to be, you'd get your email about the planning, the agenda and everything and listed down the side was all the different items and you could click on it and go to it. They've changed it. So now you've got a tiny little thing like that along the bottom. You haven't got a clue what they are, where you are. So I always access my planning agenda on my personal laptop. Because the e-dot gov stuff, the systems they use are not user friendly. So, you know, if it's a straightforward email, I've got no problem. That would be my fourth email address I've got. You know, it's a case of remembering which ones to look at in the morning, but, you know, that's my problem. But some of the systems they use are absolute rubbish.
The main thing with the dot gov is the fact of, so like myself or Stan, we've got so many different email things that I would then know that all my council ones are going to come in on dot gov. It also means hopefully that I won't be asking any of you to send me some more Amazon vouchers because I'm unindated with all of them that you're sending me. Yeah, and there's the encryption on there, but that's the main reason why if people don't want to use that, then the office will only be sending out to the dot govs. It will be a case of you having the hard copies of the agenda. It'll be a trial and error, but I think we've got to progress. We can't stay in the dark ages of not having things. And an email address, if it's just sending you an email from the office, it will just come through as quickly as the ones you get now.
Come back on that, I'm not saying I wouldn't have it, obviously I would if I'm re-elected. But, you know, I'm just saying, flagging up that although it's a government-run thing, I think it's because it's a government-run thing, somebody says, oh, we can change this. You know, I'm sure there was a department of change, you know, this is working nicely, we'll change this. To make it more difficult, but I'm just flagging it up that it's not straightforward. But I'd be quite happy to receive emails on it, yeah.
Yes, Peter?
What you'll get from the town council is what you'd get now. Because it's a dot gov.uk, it's only an email address, nothing more. So you will get it in the same format you get it now, so it's not like Breckland. That's because Breckland are running their own system. We will just be sending an email out to those email addresses. If you don't want it, you don't have one, that's not a problem. And if you say, I don't want to use the email addresses at all, I don't want it, you just won't get anything else that comes out in between council meetings. And when there is a council meeting, because you have said, I don't want that, I want a hard copy, you will get a hard copy at the appropriate time, you will get a hard copy now. All the difference is if they send other things out electronically and you don't have an email address, you won't get it. But, you know, that's a choice that people make at the end of the day.
Yes, Pat?
Yeah, I don't have any objections, but it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but it used to be that if you don't want to use that address, you can permanently forward it to your own email address. So it wouldn't really make that big a difference. So, you know, I don't see a problem.
Yes, Stan?
Yeah, putting my GDPR hide on again, it's not a matter of actually what the councillors want. The council are obliged to ensure that the data they send out is secure. If a councillor chooses that they don't want to use that method, then the other methods as been mentioned are the hard copies. But this isn't something that should be debated, this should have been instilled years ago, literally years ago. It's unfortunate that not all councillors want to use it. And the fact is, a little more than what Peter said, but you would need to initially divert the dot gov email to your Outlook or whatever mail server you use, but once that's done, that's done and you're getting a secure mail. But it's not a thing of opt-in and opt-out. Everyone would be allocated the email address and whether they use it is a matter for them if they choose not to and they have the hard copies. Graham, can you stop doing that, mate? Yes, start. Yeah, it's down to the individual, but the council have the obligation. We can't say to council, don't bother, we're not going to use it, the council have to do it. How you choose to handle the data that's passed to you or not is a different kettle of fish.
Do you want us to vote on this or it will go through, we need to vote on it? Okay. All those in favour of a dot gov email being issued when the new council start? In favour, aren't they? So that will go through, Michelle? Thank you. No, but it's minuted that we've agreed it, so now it's fine. Item 7.4, to agree payments for coronation event. Yes, Michelle?
Not quite sure about this one. I haven't been given any, any payments for you to agree as such. All I, how I understand it is obviously it was agreed that the three thousand be allocated in the budget for the coronation event. And I think, I don't know if council could decide, instead of us just giving the Sports Centre the three thousand, would we be happy that they, every invoice that's accumulated, it comes to us to pay? Am I right in saying that? I think it's more how we deal with the payments of everything than just giving them the money, that's how I understand it.
I think due to previous liaisons with the Sports Centre, I don't think anybody would be happy to just give them three thousand pounds. So I would suggest, as Michelle has said, that we judge each invoice on its merit as to what they are actually buying with it. So like if they give us an invoice for twenty barrels of beer or something for their sports and social club, I personally wouldn't be very happy to pay for that. But if they're going to say that they're going to put it towards things like the petting zoo or things for the children to be able to do, then that's a different kettle of fish. Yeah? Yes, Pat?
Yeah, the risk of going round in circles, I don't quite understand. I mean, I was in that meeting that we agreed to give them three thousand. I don't have a problem with it, but, and I know this is going back to what Beryl was saying about us not knowing what we are, are we doing anything?
Yes, Beryl, you've got a question?
Can we remember that the Sports Centre has got five thousand pounds from the Breckland for this event as well? So I know they've got the petting zoo and I don't know what else they've got coming, so I don't know.
I think what we agree, we would agree to contribute up to three thousand pounds towards the cost of an event, which we would do in conjunction with the Sports Centre. But to do that, we've got to know what we're paying for. You come back to the point Beryl raised earlier on. So at the meeting on the 11th, once we know what is taking place on that day, organised by the Sports Centre, I'm sure Sue will be able to say she has organised this part of it, that part of it, and that part of it. When the invoices come in for those bits, we're paid for them. That's what our contribution would be for. It would not be to give three thousand pounds to the Sports Centre and say, get on with it. We've got to be able to prove, it's public money that we've got, what we're spending it on. So I don't have a problem with that. I think when Sue tells us what she has organised on behalf of the town council for that function, we'll be able to pay those invoices when they come in.
Yes, Stan, Catherine and then?
Madam Chair, it's a matter of record that we gave the Sports Centre seven thousand pounds for kitchen renovations on the understanding that we would see receipts. Michelle, have you had those receipts yet? No.
Yes, Catherine?
For the minutes, what we need to agree is that we know that we have already agreed an amount that we will contribute to the event and that in principle we agree for the payment on invoice. But this is all based on the assumptions that we will be provided with information, more full information at the meeting, at the events meeting on the 11th. And at that meeting, we'll be able to agree the payments. So agreeing in principle, but the actual payments, we need to have more information about them on the 11th.
Yes, Keith?
Thank you. They're getting five thousand pounds from Breckland, but it's not directly from Breckland, is it? It's from central government. If we are contributing three thousand pounds, that needs to be after they have spent that five thousand pounds. So I think we need to make sure that we see all the invoices they have towards that five thousand pounds before we pay anything. Otherwise, we're going to end up giving them three thousand pounds and they're going to put five thousand pounds in their back pocket.
Yes, Pat, I'm just, sorry, keep on about this, but I'm a bit confused because I thought when we first started talking about this that we were going to do something similar to the event that was going to go on there a couple of years ago when, yeah, for the, they were going to put a little pack together for the kiddies, a coin and a few other things, like they did at the Queen's Coronation. I hasten to add, I was not there. But that all seems to have gone by the wayside.
We don't know what they're doing, Pat. That's, that's the thing.
Well, I know, but Sue seemed vague even when I spoke to her the other day and
I think we've got to leave it now for the events meeting. I mean, it sort of like rumbled through my head if we do end up having a stall. We may need some of that money to fund whatever our stall is. Because if it's going to be a big event, we probably would need more of whatever to last the day.
It would be good if Toby's, I know he isn't here tonight, but it would be good if he was at that meeting.
He would. Is everyone happy that we've discussed that sufficiently? Item eight, to consider donation requests received from Watten Twinning Association. Yep.
Say a few words on it, please, because I don't think Margaret has described very well in the thing what she is doing.
Over to you, Beryl.
We are going to Vetsa on the 26th of March. And on the Saturday, we are going to the opening of this museum, RAF Lab, I believe it is. And in this is going to have this room for the twinning association between Vetsa and Watten. And we've been asked to give them something to put in this museum. And Margaret is doing albums of pictures and events going right back to 36 years to put in these albums with all the pictures she's got. And she's reproducing them all and putting them in. So there's a real good catalogue of what has happened between the two councils in that time over the 36 years. Hopefully, there's pictures of every visit that has been both in Vetsa and in Watten. She's also, I don't know if you've seen them down in the Dragonfly Centre, the village books that were done on each village in Wayland. She's also got a set of them to take as well so that Wayland is represented in this museum as well. And what she is doing is really, really nice, but it's proved very, very costly to do. As she's, as you can imagine, photos and writing up 36 years events has taken her quite a time to do and she's still doing it. But it's very, very beautiful what she's doing. Thank you. And worthy of being in a museum.
Yes, Peter.
Since I haven't had to declare an interest in this, I propose that we approve the application.
All those in favour? Yeah, that's carried. Item nine, to consider a response to Breckland's issues and options, local plan consultation. Has anyone got any comments that they'd like to make? So we've considered it. What do we think on it? Are we going to have any input on it anyway?
What's the date of response?
Yeah.
You know, and you look at it and you think, well, what does that mean? Perhaps we could say to them, our comment would be with the writing in plain English in future. So anybody, members of the public can understand it.
19th of May.
Well, yes, leave it to the new council.
Well, now that, they won't, they won't be elected by them, will they? Yeah, refer it to the next meeting so that on one of these wet and windy days, you can all sit down with it and translate it into English. It's all right. It's so.
But it's like everything else. I'm sorry.
Yes, Jane. I don't know.
I don't know whether, I don't know directly, but I'm sure Liz is on top of all these things. I'm sure she's had a, got it. And she maybe, maybe we could ask her to translate it.
Yeah. Good. Yeah, thank you. Some what?
Is that part of this? I'm glad you've read it, huh? But we've already made application of that.
Who did that last time?
Left and right hand.
Because one's Norfolk County Council, the other's Breckland, isn't it? So Norfolk County Council want to put them on the high street. Breckland want to put them in their, in their car parks. Well, they'd probably put it in the Queen's Hall the longest day, wouldn't they? Yes, Keith.
Yeah, from the Breckland point of view, three of us were involved, three Breckland councillors were invited for to a meeting and had walked around. The other two couldn't make it, so I did it. And, yeah, we, I think we all agreed the same things, but one at the in the Queen's Hall car park and one at the Vets car park. And it all, a lot of it depends on what electrics are available close by to actually take it from, but they are the two main points there. I think the county council, if they want to put them on the high street, that's just putting some more somewhere else, which is brilliant. Support that.
Thank you. So item 10, to accept market rules as presented. Feel happy with those rules? All those in favour of accepting? Item 11, planning, to consult on planning applications received since the last meeting. Are you going to do something then, Keith?
Can I make my usual declaration, please, Madam Chairman?
Can do. And then if you'd like to pass the mic over to Jane, would you like to take over, Jane?
Will do. This is a quick one. 11.1, this is just one to note. It's FUL 2023 0006, Watten Junior School, Brandon Road. They are having a new building, which is a resource centre, play area, car parking and a new pathway installed, just for our information. There's nothing to actually comment on. 11.2.
One minute, one minute. We've got some hands up. Yes, Peter.
Sorry. Yep.
Our illustrious MP has put a newsletter out and put stuff out saying how thrilled he is to support special needs in two particular schools in his constituency. And he has not mentioned the Watten schools at all. So I would like, I would like to suggest that the mayor write to Mr Freeman, expressing deep upset that he has mentioned other schools but has ignored once again Watten. And why is he not supporting this application?
I don't see any problem with that. I mean, it's not a planning issue, but it fits, it fits under this heading, yeah.
His nice letter was talking about Sofford. Fakenham, I think, as well, that he mentioned. Yes, Catherine.
Yeah. That's right, yeah. No, this is, this isn't, they're not actually consulting us, they're just letting us know. It's just, it's just a courtesy, really. Just in case we had not, one awake at the meeting where we actually supported the last thing, which frequently happens. 11.2, it's 11 Monkham's Drive, 3PO 2021, 1432HOU. It's just changes to ground floor elevation, windows, removal of junior breast. They regard it as a non-material minor amendment. If it's a non-material minor amendment, I'm not sure it needs an application, but I can't see any planning issues on it anyway. There is a third one that came in. And I did want you to all get a chance to look at this one, but unfortunately, the date of the response is to, is before the next meeting, so we couldn't look at it then. It's the decommissioning of Barclays Bank. Removal of existing external signage, ATM, night safe and infill the apertures. Removal of internal counters, furnitures and staff partitions on the ground floor at 56 High Street. I can't see any planning reasons why we can complain against it. It's a shame that, that, you know. But the owners aren't going to be able to, no one wants a bank anymore, so they're not going to be able to get it. And there's no indication at all in the application of any possible future uses. There's no clue. But I just thought you might like to have had a chance to look at it, but you suppose you can do it now. But there's nothing in there that says what they might use it for. They're just literally taking everything out. Yeah, grad gutting it. Sorry? Because it's a grade two listed building.
Yes, Peter.
It's a grade two, yeah.
Chair, they want to do it, they want to do it. That's no problem. Although the company that owns the link, who run a lot of ATMs, said Watten was going to be one of the hubs they wanted to use, put different banks in during the week. Now, I wouldn't expect that to be as part of that. That would have to come in as a fresh planning application, I presume.
Well, it would depend on the building. I mean, if, if, for instance, they were going to take that building over as a bank, they wouldn't need planning permission because it wouldn't be a change of use. So if somebody decided they wanted to take over the Lloyds building as a bank, it wouldn't need to change of use. If they take over a shop and turn it to a bank, then they need to change of use. So, but it's just sad. I mean, we all knew it was coming, but I just hope there might be some kind of clue in the application, but and that's it, really. Nothing else.
Yes, Keith.
Thank you. Something, it was just said that Barclays Bank building is a grade two listed building. How come? It was built in the 19. What's, I'll tell you what, Rita, Rita would be actually proud of that because her father was the foreman on that when it was built. You know, it was built in the 1960s. There's nothing in that building that makes it architecturally interesting.
The exterior is probably a prime example of Barclays Bank building in small towns. When you go to the barber, that's listed. You can put anybody you want in, that's actually listed. You can put young women to be listed. We're all objects, we're.
Thank you, because I hope you don't, because it costs money. I just cannot believe when there are builders in this town which are worthy of, of preservation, and something like that gets grade two listed. Can't believe it.
Anybody got anything else on that planning? Okay, I will end the meeting if we could turn that off.